We'll call a committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for May 25th, 2022 to order. We'll, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan? Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 11th.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a consortium agreement with the Kane County Office of Community Reinvestment for the 2023 through 25 Home Investment Partnership Program. The city has been partnering with Kane County since 2005 in administering the home program funds that are annually provided to the city in Kane County through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Home funds support affordable housing activities including homeowner rehabilitation, homebuyer assistance, and the development of affordable housing. The consortium has received over $12.6 million from HUD to date. Notable projects using these funds include the Larkin Center, Elgin Artspace Lofts, and the redevelopment of three single-family homes at the corner of Spring Street and Franklin Boulevard. The home program is administered by the Kane County Office of Community Reinvestment with the Kane-Elgin Home Commission. The commission is made up of 11 members, five representing Elgin, five from Kane County, and one from the city of St. Charles. The proposed agreement is for a three-year term that includes an automatic renewal with provisions that enable the city to exit the program if it was so inclined. Mark Malat is here, along with representatives from Kane County, if the council has any questions.
Move for approval?
Second.
And moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero.
Item B is a resolution approving recipients for the 2022 Historic Architectural Rehabilitation Grant Program. This program provides incentives to owners of residential property to offset the cost of exterior rehabilitation work. The 50/50 component of the program covers half the cost of the work for eligible properties in an amount up to $20,000. The 75/25 component provides 75% of the cost, also in the amount of 20, up to $20,000, for low-to-moderate-income homeowners. This year, the city received 10 applications, with the six top-scoring projects being recommended for full funding. Five awards are under the 50/50 component of the program, and one is under the 75/25 project.
Move for approval, second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. I'm glad to see that the majority of the awards are going to owner-occupied properties. Was there a reason why, just to refresh my memory, I know that there's, we've had some discussion about this program in the past, was there a justification for why we were including non-owner-occupied properties in this program?
Good evening, Councilwoman. The program has always been set up that the 50/50 was eligible for owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied. The 75/25 had to be owner-occupied.
And, okay, just that it was open to everybody?
Correct. The rationale being that improving that home improves the street and regardless of, regardless of hoodlums there.
I think that was my only question. I guess my, my preference would be to, you know, for us to reevaluate this program and perhaps limit it to owner-occupied homes, potentially at some point, you know, maybe it's something for discussion at a different time.
Sure.
But I think it makes sense assisting homeowners, some of the lower-income homeowners that may be struggling financially to do some of these repairs, but if you don't fall within that category, you know, I can't think of a whole lot of other programs that we're doing like this that are not targeting lower-income homeowners that may not have the money to do some of these more expensive repairs. So I would just like to use the same lens for that.
Right, and that's, that is an excellent observation. The only thing I would add to that is, is remember, we kind of characterize these grants as the icing-on-the-cake types of grants. These are not historically going to score very high for general maintenance types of things. So these are where people will come in, find the historic photograph that shows how the porch was recreated, and go back to the original way it was. We still do have CDBG allocation that we've set aside for persons low to moderate income that do those general repairs, and those are citywide.
Yes, definitely. And I know that we've expanded it since, I think, 2019. It's not just limited to the Tiff area. We're awarding grants outside of the Tiff area as well. So, okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to disagree. I think that if somebody comes to Elgin and invests in some property, and whether they live in it or not, it's an investment, and I think it's good for our community. And I think that by limiting them to qualify for some type of program like this, I think that is something that isn't, it isn't good. It isn't good for various reasons. One, what incentive do they have to fix this property? You know, I mean, not everybody has to depend on this, but there are some people that do, especially when it's an investment. I think it should be open for everybody, you live in it or not. And if we start limiting these things, maybe somebody else would think of investing somewhere else, and that isn't something we want. I think that what we're trying to do is get people to invest in Elgin, and we're trying to get people to maintain their homes whether they live in them or not. I kind of did believe in, previously, that it was something that should strictly be for homeowners, but I think about it, and I think we're limiting ourselves on that. And again, maybe that is, as the councilwoman said, a discussion for another day, but just saying. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you. I'd just like to chime in briefly that I concur with Councilwoman Martinez. The uniqueness of this program is not just a general house. It's the unique architectural historic homes that Elgin has above all other communities. It's one of the things that sets us apart, where we have more and more showcase homes and more unique showpieces than anyone else, as I know the councilwoman Powell knows because she attends the housewalk all the time. And many of the homes that have been on the housewalk have been able to redo an original styled porch that maybe they weren't able to redo exactly, being in the historic district or landmark home, without the grant, or the grant was the incentive. And I think it's a great program that helps set us apart with our architectural homes that are second to none. So I agree that, as much as I like the homeowners being there, I think it still takes pride and adds pride to the streetscape, the house itself, future owners, and the people that are in it. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger?
I'm glad to see that, you know, we're discussing the Elgin National Watch Historic District, and that changes in this were made to support the residents in that area. And I think we should continue to look for ways to support the homeowners there.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Shaw?
Just to be clear, I don't think any changes were made to include them this round. They've always been included. And I think the conversation that maybe you're tipping your hat back to is a prior conversation about, you know, maybe removing that as a historical district just due to some of the other factors that we've talked about in the past. Back, back to the point at hand, I guess I still go back to my tagline of, you know, my house, my responsibility, and your house, your responsibility. And, you know, whether you're in the historic district or not, any investment that people make into their homes sure makes a difference in their, in their block and in their community. And so, you know, when I saw my neighbor do some investment in their home last year, outside of the historic district, well, it sure made the neighborhood nice, but I can tell you with certainty that they did not get any funding from the city to make their house and their property look nicer. So I still think that it's the program that needs to phase out, as you have a very broad housing stock in Elgin, and each homeowner needs to take care of their own block, their own house. And so, it's just my thoughts.
I have a thought.
Yes, sir.
And I'm looking at number six. It's an application by Elvia Aguilara at 408 Bowen Court.
Yes, sir.
Now, I grew up in that neighborhood, and Bowen Court is one of, if I remember correctly, is one of the original areas in the Watch Factory District that was, they're bungalows, really built back in the 20s and 30s by employees of the Watch Factory and workers there. So they, the bones are really nice, but the neighborhood kind of went to seed a few years ago. It had a, it had some problems. It was one of the higher crime areas. And this lady has applied, or they've applied for $6,800. And I would like to see the city find that $6,800 for them, because I think this is a street, so a short street between, for those not familiar, between St. Charles and Arlington. And it's a couple blocks long, nice little homes, middle-class people, and this may be an inspiration to that, that little short street to fix things up. So if we could find $6,800, I'd like to see that placed in this neighborhood.
We would be glad to administer that extra grant.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, seven one.
Item C is the acceptance of the Elgin Township Grant for the Kids United Summer Program. The Police Department's primary summer youth program is Kids United. This program provides a safe, fun, and educational environment for Elgin kids. It's staffed by the Elgin Police School Resource Officers, rope officers, police explorers, and social service interns, in addition to Parks and Recreation Department employees and other community volunteers. Funding for Kids United activities are derived from a grant for the Elgin Township, and staff is recommending approval of this program once again.
Move for approval?
Second. Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Dixon?
Yep, thank you. Again, this is a great program, but I also just want to bring to the masses' attention that there are, there are a lot of great programs going on this summer, a lot of them funded by School District Q46 and ARPA funding, and those slots are filling up quick. So if you're in U46, you have a child in U46, you know, sign up for the program, go to the website. Also, the Elgin Township, Elgin Township are offering some programs, as well as the YWCA. They offer some great programs too, as well as the YMCA. So I just want to bring that out to, to folks. So, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. One of my favorite programs that we do with our police department and our youth, I always say this every time it comes up. I also want to give a special shout-out to Pastor Abi and his, his team with New Life Covenant Church. This will be the second year that they'll be hosting the Kids United program at their facility. Spoke with police department staff, and it seems that it went really well. The space was really well-suited to, you know, a lot of the programs. They had great indoor and outdoor space for the kids, and the church and Pastor Abi continue to be great partners with the city of Elgin. So I just wanted to thank them publicly for their continued partnership and support.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to that, it's true that this is a great program, and it's true that churches are helping, but I just want to make it a big note that this is what rope officers do in the areas. This is something also that SROs do in the summertime. This is something that's huge for the police department, and it's huge because this shows that in collaboration with these churches, we are investing in children at a young age. And I think this has made a difference on why, when you do that, we have crime that's down. We have people that are safe. And so, a big shout, shout-out to the program and everybody involved. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you. Real quick, I'd like to thank the Elgin Township for supplying the grant money. And upon presentation of this program and requesting the grant, I know it was told by Township Supervisor, Mr. Bruterly, that the Elgin Police Representatives that were at the meeting gave an excellent presentation, including some slides, and explained how it impacts the children. And it does, there's so many Elgin policemen that are part of it as well. It just makes, reminds me that, once again, it's a situation that sets Elgin Police Department apart and shows how good they are without guidance from a task force. Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero.
Item D is a Kane County Child Advocacy Center Agreement for Investigating Sensitive Crimes Involving Children. The Kane County Child Advocacy Center, KCCAC, as it's commonly referred to, is a division of the Kane County State's Attorney's Office, and is charged with investigating and prosecuting serious physical and sexual abuse crimes against children. The KCCAC investigated 87 Elgin-based cases last year, and assisted the Elgin Police Department in 19 other cases. Given the significant caseload, KCCAC is requiring either a police officer assigned full-time to its division or financial assistance from the city to support these investigations. In the past, the city assigned a full-time police officer to the KCCAC, but discontinued that practice in 1999, instead providing $35,000 annually. This year, KCCAC is requesting the police department that it assigns an officer to KCCAC for two days a week in addition to the annual $35,000 fee for services. This request is being made to the aforementioned increase in Elgin cases, and the police department is recommending that the city continue this agreement with this new two-day request for assignment of a police officer.
Move for approval?
Second. Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero.
Item E is a Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates for the 2022 Central Area Reservicing Project. This agreement will authorize the city's engineering consultant to oversee the construction of the 2022 Central Area Reservicing Project. This work will involve field inspections, design interpretation, contract administration, and project coordination, all to ensure the timely project completion of this work. The project area for this area includes Jackson Street, West Chicago Street, Crystal Street, St. John Street, and Hiawatha Drive.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero.
Item F is Change Order Number One and Final for the 2021 through 22 Bulk Road Salt Procurement. The city approved the purchase of 9,000 tons of bulk road salt at the cost of $50.54 a ton in December of last year. This per-ton price was secured through the Illinois Department of Central Management Services Joint Purchasing Cooperative. The 2021 through 2022 per-ton price is nearly 50% less expensive than the city paid in the previous year. It's one of the few commodities that the city has seen a drop in price over the past year. Public Works Department, realizing that it had additional capacity for salt this year, made the decision to make an additional procurement of an additional 1,400 additional tons at this incredibly low price. With this purchase, the city's, the city's salt barns will be at 100% capacity in each of its three facilities going into the coming winter season.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any questions? Discussion. Ms. Powell?
Just a comment. I really appreciate the fact that we're taking advantage of the low pricing and filling up all of our salt domes. I can't remember exactly what year we added that third dome that's along Bowes Road. I want to say mid-2000s, maybe around 2004, 2005-ish, but definitely a great investment to be able to have three salt domes in our community that we can fill up and be ready for the winter season, which seems to linger on and on here nowadays. So kudos to staff for taking advantage of this. Who knows what this pricing is going to look like next time it comes out.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero.
Item G is the annual membership renewal with the Metro West Council of Governments. Metro West is an organization comprised of 33 municipal governments serving a population of more than 750,000 persons in Kane, DeKalb, and Kendall Counties. As we know, informed local leaders recognize that working together at the regional level is particularly important in the current economic climate. Regional collaboration has the potential to save local dollars in an ever-constrained fiscal environment, and these regional councils of government, not unlike Metro West, are poised to serve more than as a forum to help meeting those challenges, because Metro West is particularly well-positioned to improve the capabilities of its member communities. In the past year, the city's work in conjunction with the Metro West was instrumental in ensuring that the local governmental distributive fund remained at the same level significantly while, while there were talks of decreasing the share to municipalities. Metro West and other councils of government were effective in lobbying the state to see a slight increase in the local governmental distributive fund, raising the allocation to municipalities to 6.16% from the current 6.06%. While this increase is slight, what is more significant is that the LGDF allocation was not reduced. Metro West and its partners will continue their work in restoring the LGDF to the original 10% level in the future years.
Move for approval? Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is my first year in. I sat just about a year ago, and I didn't quite know what to expect from these councils of government. Obviously, this information's laid out in the memo, but I have come across other organizations that seem to be more proactive and more updated in terms of their offerings. And so, from my experience, as a new member, Metro West did not reach out to me for any new member orientation or any briefings on Open Meetings Act. It was actually an outside organization in a different county that reached out. So I've tried to get as much information as I can about this organization, and they seem to operate in a kind of top-down fashion. It's mainly contact with the city manager and the mayor. So maybe I'm just not completely understanding the structure of it. However, in my position, I think they should be doing more, and for that reason, I'm not going to vote to approve this, because I just expect more from their organization at this point. So, thank you for the time.
Anything else? Hey, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
No.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, five two. Or I'm sorry, six two. Announcements from the council. Ooh, we got all kinds of hands up. Ms. Rauschenberger?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our police, our fire department. On Friday morning, we woke up to our neighbor's house on fire, and it was quite a fire and quite an experience for someone that could virtually feel the heat inside my house from the fire next door. I talked to the, the fire chief, and he said that the fire was unusually challenging due to how the fire spread inside and outside the structure. There were unique aspects to the way the building was constructed. It hampered their initial efforts. However, they did an exemplary job, which I can, since I watched most of it, and they contained the fire, limiting damage, and made sure everyone was safely out of that house. So I want to, the crews that responded, they brought in three command officers, Battalion Chief Dan Wagner, Division Chief Mike Oni, and the chief himself, and crews from every Elgin fire station. So additionally, there was assistance from Bartlett, South Elgin, and Hoffman Estates. So, as I say, it was quite an experience, and I felt high anxiety that my house was kind of less than 20 feet away from this fire, but felt as though our fire department did an excellent job, and I want to thank all the officers and firemen that were there to put this fire out and make sure we were all safe. So that's one thing. Secondly, I just want to say, since our last meeting, we've had two national tragedies. The shootings that occurred in a grocery store in Buffalo, New York, and at the school in Uvalde, Texas. These are heartbreaking events. I would like to offer condolences on behalf of the city of Elgin to both of those communities, from our community, and our thoughts are with the families and the friends of those lives that were so senselessly lost. And I want to personally say that I believe that we need to do more on a local, state, and federal level to pass thoughtful gun legislation, and to make sure that especially our, our children and all our communities are safe. Thank you.
Mr. Thorne, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to remind everybody what this weekend means. It's the Memorial Day weekend, and Memorial Day, of course, is the time when so many service members gave the ultimate sacrifice, and they gave their lives so that we could live in this land of the free. And of course, Elgin is, stands ahead of all other suburbs with our reputation for our Memorial Day programs. And we have four programs. We have Mount Hope Cemetery. We have Lakewood Memorial Park. Then we have a larger program at Veterans Park down by the library. at Veterans Park down by the library, and that one is Navy-themed for those that have been interned at sea with the tossing of wreaths and flowers into the river. And then finally, our signature program at Bluff City Cemetery at 11 o'clock, and that will be this year's theme, the anniversary of the Air Force. We'll have guest speakers, we'll have the Larkin High School Band, we'll have the Elgin Master Corral, and it will be broadcast live on WRMN. It will also be on the city's website live video. I will extend an invitation to each and every one of you to attend it. I'd hope to see you there. I will, again, proudly be the emcee for the event. I know that the mayor is there and always gives some heart-touching words, and I always look forward to it. It's my most proudest day of being an American. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, announcements from staff?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Entertainer motion to adjourn. So, moved?
Second.
It's been moved and second to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM.
We'll call the, uh, our city council meeting for the city of Elgin for May 25th, 2022 to order. Would y'all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Will the court please call the roll?
Council members Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Brashenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 11th, 2022. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Council members Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. We have one communication this evening, and would Carrie Amaya, uh, join me at the podium, please? And your group, if you'd like. You know, usually I say something at the beginning of a proclamation, but, uh, this evening I'm not going to do that. And sometimes a mayor is best to keep his mouth shut and, uh, just reflect a little bit. So I'd like everybody to stand and join me in a moment of silence for the, uh, young people and the people in Buffalo who lost their lives and their families in the last, uh, couple of weeks. And the proclamation we have this evening has been in the works for over a month. And it's, uh, ironic that it happens at this sad time, but I think it's important for us to, uh, just reflect a little bit. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Whereas cities across the nation, including Elgin, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and are dedicated to protecting public safety. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the co-ed pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in national gun violence. And whereas in January, uh, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and the campaign to help raise awareness about gun violence. Now, therefore, I, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value all human lives. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Carrie Amaya, and I'm a volunteer with Kane and Kendall County Moms Demand Action, a mother and an educator in Kane County. Thank you, Mayor Captain, and the city council for recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day and honoring survivors of gun violence. Firearms are currently the leading cause of death for children and teens ages 1 to 19 in the United States. Gun violence is not only the mass shootings we hear about like in Buffalo and California a few weeks ago and Texas just yesterday where 19 children and two teachers lost their lives, but also suicide by firearm and domestic violence. Gun violence is an epidemic, and working together as a community is one way we can work to end it. Thank you for taking action to bring awareness to this issue.
Brings us to bids. The first of the bid is, uh, Public Works Fleet Vehicle Lift Purchase Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative.
Mayor made the motion award the bid to Vehicle Services Group in the amount of $26,490.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Council members Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 11th, 2022. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Council members Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Brings us to other business. First item is, uh, number
one is, uh, an ordinance amending ordinance number G45-21, establishing a community task force on policing.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Um, just a, just a few comments for myself. A couple, two weeks ago, um, I did make some comments, and I did end up voting yes for, for the initiative to move forward. Uh, the last couple of weeks, though, I've really reflected upon that, and, uh, I guess you might say one of the couple of those times where you, you just kind of, something bothering you, and you don't sleep well at night. That, that's kind of how I've, I've felt about this issue. And my comments, I think, I made two weeks ago are still accurate. I still am concerned about, uh, you know, this initiative and, and some of the concerns I have around, you know, the, the, the time that our staff is spending on this, both from the police department, the city manager's office, um, the dollars, when you look at the totality of how much we, we would completely be spending on this initiative and, and all, uh, it does start to concern me. And, and when I really reflect upon that, uh, that, that's something that I think we need, we need to be, be careful of. When I, when I first supported this, I wrote down, so I went back and I was like, and I, I remember being very specific when I supported this back in July of 2020, 2021, I believe, is when we've, when we've, 2020, actually, is when we first talked about this. And I made the comments, and I said, we needed to be laser-focused, we needed to be data-driven, we need to have a diverse group of people, and we need to really collaborate with the EPD as, as we go down this venture. And as I reflect now where we're at, I feel like we've really missed on a couple of those points. And so unfortunately, I'm, I'm going to be pulling my support away from both of these initiatives tonight and voting no. Um, there, there is, uh, there is still some good that can take place. I think there's, there's things that our, that our police department is doing. The conversations that are happening, I think, are the right move. And I think those can continue to, to move forward. I think those conversations that our police departments had with our task force members have probably been some of the most fruitful things that, that I've seen, being a liaison to the group along with Councilwoman Powell. And those are the types of things where I would say they should continue. Those are the activities where I think there's the most fruit. The trying to, trying to drive and, and have that level of understanding between both sides has been what I think has been the most fruitful. And so while this initiative is driving us down a very prescriptive path to continue with trying to drive towards additional recommendations to the city council, I would say let's, let's pause. Let's go through a much more informal process of having those conversations that we've had more loosely. Um, let's take the recommendations in the current format that they're at and have the council review those in their current...
We'll call the, uh, our city council meeting for the city of Elgin for May 25th, 2022 to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the court please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell? Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan? Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Uh, approval of a minutes of the previous meeting of May 11th, 2022. So moved?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight zero. We have one communication this evening and would carry Amaya, uh, join me at the podium, please. And your group if you'd like. You know, usually I say something at the beginning of a proclamation, but, uh, this evening I'm not gonna do that. And sometimes a mayor is best to keep his mouth shut and, uh, uh, just reflect a little bit. So I'd like everybody to stand and join me in a moment of silence. For the, uh, young people and the people in Buffalo who lost their lives and their families in the last couple of weeks. And the proclamation we have this evening has been in the works for over a month. And it's, uh, ironic that it happens at this sad time, but I think it's important for us to, uh, just reflect a little bit. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Whereas cities across the nation, including Elgin, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and are dedicated to protecting public safety. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the co-ed pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in national gun violence. And whereas in January, uh, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and the campaign to help raise awareness about gun violence. Now therefore, I, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value all human lives. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Carrie Amaya and I'm a volunteer with Kane and Kendall County Moms Demand Action, a mother and an educator in Kane County. Thank you, Mayor Captain, and the city council for recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day and honoring survivors of gun violence. Firearms are currently the leading cause of death for children and teens ages 1 to 19 in the United States. Gun violence is not only the mass shootings we hear about like in Buffalo and California a few weeks ago and Texas just yesterday where 19 children and two teachers lost their lives, but also suicide by firearm and domestic violence. Gun violence is an epidemic and working together as a community is one way we can work to end it. Thank you for taking action to bring awareness to this issue.
Brings us to bids. The first of the bid is, uh, Public Works Fleet Vehicle Lift Purchase Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative.
Mayor made the motion award the bid to Vehicle Services Group in the amount of $26,490.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved eight zero. Brings us to other business. First item is, uh, number one is, uh, an ordinance amending ordinance number G45-21, establishing a community task force on policing.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Um, just a, just a few comments for myself. A couple, two weeks ago, um, I did make some comments and I did end up voting yes for, for the initiative to move forward. In the last couple of weeks though, I've really reflected upon that. And, uh, I guess you might say one, a couple of those times where you, you just kind of, something bothering you and you don't sleep well at night. That, that's kind of how I've, I've felt about this issue. And my comments I think I made two weeks ago are still accurate. I still am concerned about, uh, you know, this initiative and, and some of the concerns I have around, you know, the, the, the time that our staff is spending on this, both from the police department, the city manager's office. The dollars, when you look at the totality of how much we, we would completely be spending on this initiative and, and all, it does start to concern me. And, and when I really reflect upon that, uh, that, that's something that I think we need, we need to be, be careful of. When I, when I first supported this, I wrote down, so I went back and I was like, and I, I, I remember being very specific when I supported this back in July of 2020, 2021, I believe is when we've, when we've, 2020 actually is when we first talked about this. And I made the comments and I said, we needed to be laser-focused, we needed to be data-driven, we need to have a diverse group of people, and we need to really collaborate with the EPD as, as we go down this venture. And as I reflect now where we're at, I feel like we've really missed on a couple of those points. And so unfortunately, I'm, I'm gonna be pulling my support away from both of these initiatives tonight and voting no. There, there is, uh, there is still some good that can take place. I think there's, there's things that are, that our police department is doing. The conversations that are happening, I think are the right move. And I think those can continue to, to move forward. I think those conversations that our police departments had with our task force members have probably been some of the most fruitful things that, that I've seen, being a liaison to the group along with Councilwoman Powell. And those are the types of things where I would say they should continue. Those are the activities where I think there's the most fruit. The trying to, trying to drive and, and, and have that level of understanding between both sides has been what I think has been the most fruitful. And so while this initiative is driving us down a very prescriptive path to continue with trying to drive towards additional recommendations to the city council, I would say let's, let's pause, let's go through a much more informal process of having those conversations that we've had more loosely. Let's take the recommendations in the current format that they're at and have the council review those in their current format. That's my recommendation at this point in time, and that's why I will not be supporting the two initiatives tonight.
Anything else? Uh, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I continue to not support this. I will tell you that I did ask for an attendance record, and I think that's very important. Because if you commit to be in any type of, uh, committee, any type of council, anything, it's important to be there and be there on time. Because that's, uh, be respectful to the people who are there as well. How else are you gonna, you know, if you're complaining or, or if you notice that there's something wrong, you want to change in it, the best way to make a change is simply by showing up, okay? And, um, I'm very surprised at some of these attendants. I know that, um, people volunteer, I know that people have jobs, but, um, either you should commit or not commit. Like, um, when you have 11, uh, meetings, uh, task force meeting, and you only show up for four out of 11, you're not gonna be productive. And, uh, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. I know two people went ahead and resigned, and I respect them for that. But I know there's some people that, when you have, uh, uh, you go into committees, that's very important because I think those committees, um, all the meetings are important, don't get me wrong. But the committee meetings are very important because you're really the one who's driving whatever it is, the issue that you think there's a problem in. And if you don't go to those meetings, but then you go to the regular meeting, I think that's kind of destructive. And I think this is what's happening. I don't know if anybody, um, held Kerns and West, and West to, uh, attendance. I know after like the middle of what they were trying to do, they decide, yeah, uh, attendance is important, okay? This is a facilitating team that I think should know that. I know that in three meetings that I was ready to listen to in Zoom, the agendas weren't support, weren't, um, they weren't submitted on time. And this is very important because this provides a city to, um, provide community notice. And if you don't have that on time, you can't have a meeting. That happened three times. I know anywhere else, if I were to go to work and I didn't show up, I wouldn't get paid. And that's what it, that's how it should be. This is just a little bit of what I've been talking about. I talked about it, um, quite a bit last, uh, two weeks ago. I talked about it from the beginning when we were even thinking of bringing this up. I, I do agree that, um, it's important to listen to people. And I do agree that there's a way of, uh, of, um, us proceeding with this. But I don't think this is the way to do it. I, I can't support this, okay? Uh, the other day I, I went somewhere and somebody accused me of being the person who doesn't like to spend money. I don't like to spend other people's money, okay? And I think I take, um, care of that. I take, I take pride in that because I don't even use the city's, um, credit card that's given to us, you know? I don't even use that, uh, because it's not my money and I think we have to be careful. I think that if we're gonna proceed, there's other ways that we can proceed, but this certainly is not a way. If we go to September 1st, if you really look at the dates, we're talking about really like maybe 65 days left, okay? What can we do in those 65 days that we haven't done in all this time that we've already been on here? So again, I'm not gonna support it. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to ask, um, how long, um, maybe, um, councilperson, Good could tell me, how long were you on the, um, task force for the strategic plan?
Five years.
Five years, okay. That was a task force that went on for five years, correct? And the budget task force, how long was that?
Six months.
Six months plus, okay? Um, I, I know that there, there have been other task forces that have, you know, I, I'm not sure you should put a limit of time to, or short or long. Um, there's work to be done and I think we've asked and tasked our citizens to get that, um, work done. And again, I will tell you, it's a little bit different to talk about, um, you know, budgets, um, numbers, uh, versus, um, strategic thought process versus, um, personal experiences with law enforcement that many of these task force members have had. It is a, a, a different kind of, um, topic to think about, to look forward to. Many people with, um, again, personal experiences, what is happening around us in our city, in our state, in, in the nation. You know, police reform has been looked at around the world. I don't think we should put a limit of time. Um, I think it's disrespectful to the, the citizens that have put their time in, um, to this task force without seeing it to the finish. Time for staff spent, um, that's why we have staff. Dollars spent, I would surely rather put, uh, you know, some hundred thousand dollars toward this than, um, I've discussed with many people, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to consider a skate park. Not my best use of funds in our city when we are talking about, um, a relationship between our, again, excellent police force and our citizens, and it is very important. So I think that, um, also that why stop midpoint? I think the task force and the consultant have committed to what they can do to make it a little more efficient and to proceed, uh, and again, I'm not even sure why we have to put in a, a specific date to this. It's important, important work that is going on across this country. And we deserve to have it done right and, um, and, and without, uh, you know, so many, uh, ways to stop it from happening. So that's where I stand. I support this 100%. I support our commissions, I support our citizens that are working hard and with no remuneration in any way, um, just out of their hearts to make this a better city. And I do think the, the fire, uh, the police department for also, um, being part of this and putting in their time and energy. And I, I know our, uh, our chief is open to making this work. So that, uh, that's what I would like to say this evening.
Anything else? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just briefly. You know, I, I hear the word insulting because it's, we, we don't give them enough time or it shouldn't be a time limit. But I, I think that's part of it. Give us some results within a certain amount of time. They agreed to it, but then they didn't produce. But speaking of insulting, when I looked at some of these attendance records and I see, for instance, one gentleman who chose to be on the Subcommittee on Developing Civilian Review Board, he missed over half the meetings. And another one went to the meetings, he missed almost half. Yet he was one, I did watch a meeting, and he said he was gonna make a suggestion that they get paid. To me, those are the insulting things I see. I think our police department's second to none, and they're the last police department that needs a task force. I've said it before, I think there's a better use of funds, uh, and I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Powell?
So as one of the liaison, the, one of the council liaisons to the task force, I, I feel the need to, to, to say a couple of words. Um, first of all, again, thank you to, um, our citizens who are involved with this task force for the time, effort, um, and thought and, and continued progress that they are making. Yes, it has been a lot of time, and I think as Councilwoman Rauschenberger points out, these are very complex, delicate, um, issues that we're talking about. There's a lot of passion around, you know, experiences that people have had. And it takes time. The fact that a lot of these, you know, our first, most of our first meetings were done remotely, I think, um, complicated a lot of the work that was being done. But now that we're meeting in person, I've seen, um, a, a lot different tenor and, and progress. And I think everyone likes that a whole lot better. In terms of attendance, yeah, attendance is, is definitely important. I'm not sure where Councilwoman Martinez feels like the facilitator didn't emphasize that attendance was important. We advertise the meetings and make sure that people, you know, know about them. Obviously, people work, they have families, whatever the situation is. We can revisit that with folks that are having, um, attendance issues. And some people, um, recognize that they have some things that have come up that, um, are no longer able to commit to the task force. But I believe we anticipated that when we put this task force together, which is why we picked so many people. We knew that we weren't gonna have 18 people at the end of the day. And we knew that we weren't gonna have everyone at every meeting because it's just the nature of the beast. So that's one of the reasons why we went with so many people. I remember that specifically. I guess I'm, I'm a little disappointed when I keep hearing people say that we don't need this task force when I remember how full our council chambers were for any number of meetings when folks from our community came and spoke their truth, their experience in this community, um, good, bad, or otherwise, with our police department. Um, we heard from a lot of folks after De Cynthia Clements was killed. We've heard from folks before that, we've heard from folks after that. This is an equity issue, and I know everybody's not comfortable with that topic, but I'm gonna say it. Everyone in this community deserves to feel safe. Everyone in this community deserves to trust and feel comfortable with the police department that is here to serve the community. I want all of us to have that same faith and trust in our, uh, police department. So when, um, my colleagues that don't look like me talk about that our police department is excellent and they've never had any problems with it, that's great. But there are other people in this community that have not had that experience. And I, I, I would hope that if we're up here as elected officials serving this whole community that we can understand, stand that, we can understand that and, and act accordingly. That would be like me telling a person in a wheelchair that, gee, I don't have a problem getting around Elgin. What's your problem? I experienced getting around Elgin very differently than that person does. This is the same thing. So for once, I would ask that some of you put yourselves in somebody else's shoes and understand that your experiences are not the same that everybody else's experiences have been. The task force is making progress, um, they have continued to meet. Uh, the subcommittees are, have continued to meet over the past few weeks. They are excited about the work that they are doing. And I think we owe it to them to let them continue this work. My ask, um, of the task force, my ask of staff, and obviously my ask of Kerns and West is that we all get on the same page to make this work. I think from a staff perspective, we, we've got a, staff has to probably hone in a little bit more, in terms of oversight of the Kerns and West contract and make sure that they're staying on task. In terms of my role as a, um, city council liaison, I need to work with the task force and the facilitation team and staff to make sure that all of this is happening as well. And then the task force has to also work amongst themselves to make sure that they are prioritizing what it is that they're talking about. Our police department has been a part of this, they are gonna continue to be a part of it. Um, I'm not sure where some of those comments have come from, that they're not a part of it. I, I just, it's easy to say that this isn't needed when you haven't had the experiences that other people have had in the community. So I will be, um, supporting this, I'm gonna continue to support it. And I hope that the majority of my colleagues will support it as well. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Um, Mr. Good?
I'll just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll just briefly, um, say that I, I do support this going forward. Um, you know, I spent time, you know, watching the videos, talking with staff, uh, speaking with both liaisons. Um, and I had my questions about Kerns and West. Just from things that I viewed, some of my experiences I've had with other facilitators. So I was somewhat hesitant to move forward with them as the facilitator going forward. That in addition to hearing a lot of questions coming from the task force members themselves. So that was a, a big topic in my mind. However, in the, leading up to our last meeting, it'd been kind of put to me as a binary. Like, do we wanna pull the plug on this or are we gonna move forward? And something that Councilmember Rauschenberger had pointed out is, there's been times before in the past where we've asked our residents to step up to contribute to the processes that we put forward. And then have kind of walked away and left it vague. And that happened to me personally. I kind of had the rug pulled out from under me. That's how I felt. And so, um, looking at it from a binary perspective, I do wanna see this through. I do wanna make sure that the community members who have put their time into this continue to feel supported. Um, I, I do definitely see areas where it could have been better from the facilitation standpoint. However, things are not perfect, you know, it's been pointed out, uh, remote. Uh, there was a large group that they were trying to facilitate, so there's complications. So it's, it's not an ideal scenario. However, after all the outreach I've done with this and then hearing, uh, my colleagues and their opinions on it, um, and some of the comments that were made last week, it just further affirmed that we do need to see this through. But as we've all indicated, there needs to be some increased levels of encouragement and oversight from the facilitation team. So, um, yeah, that went a little bit longer than I wanted to. I just wanna say I will be supporting this tonight. And, uh, and again, we just have to get all on board and, and make sure that we can get something positive out of this.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am, um, not surprised by some of the pushback. Some of the, uh, what I, I feel is a, a lack of understanding. Or even an, an inability to, um, be a good listener and to just take a moment and a, and a step back and, and listen to your fellow residents, um, and community members. Be kind and be, uh, give grace. And just be understanding of someone else's plot in life. Someone's, uh, someone else's, uh, experiences. Versus automatically turning to, well, there's nothing wrong with policing. There's nothing, um, EPD is perfect. Nothing needs to change. Which is totally, um, opposite from, uh, a lot of people's experience in this community. And you have to be open to that. Now, you know, I am disappointed that Councilman Shaw has, um, decided to withdraw his support. But I gotta tell you, I'm still appreciative of the time that he's given and that he has been able in listening and trying, giving effort. Although I am disappointed ultimately with the way that he is going to vote tonight. But that's really what you want to get, get out of this process. You, you want people who are able to, uh, to listen to others and to hear their experiences. You want people who are able to listen to others and to hear their experiences and to calculate that within their decision-making and be fair about this topic. Now, you know, I am someone who spends a lot of time with officers. You know, in my private life, you know, I worked for a police department. I spent a lot of time talking to deputies, lieutenants, sergeants. I spent a lot of time with EPD officers, you know, through the YEP program, the Youth Empowerment Program that we've been working with, I've been working with along with community members with Chief Lally now for almost a couple of years. And you have these very frank conversations with officers, right? You know, they have some questions about, you know, what the experiences are, what things are like, and maybe what some of those concerns are. And they come to me and I come to them. We have these difficult conversations. And when I, one of the things that I pull away from those conversations is, if you, when I have those conversations, they'll agree that some things need to change. They, I've never heard an officer really say, you know, everything is perfect. We don't need to do anything. I've never heard an officer that I've spoken to say that. They'll agree, they'll say, you know what, I may not agree with you on everything, but I can say some stuff does need to change. Oh, okay, that's progress, right? So how can we work together to make these changes that we both agree on need to be had? That's what this process is about. It's about finding those commonalities and finding, okay, well, I recognize that some changes need to be made. This is one that we've identified. Here's another possibility. Here's another one. Let's work on this. Chief Anna Lally in EPD have been involved with this the entire time. If you talk to Chief Lally herself, she'll say, yeah, there's some things that we can do to improve. Before the task force, she was always looking for things to do to improve the Elgin Police Department. That doesn't mean that the police department was perfect, of course, because if that was the case, she wouldn't be trying to make changes to begin with. But she already was. Now, this is a new perspective. Well, I shouldn't say new. It's a more heard perspective after the killing of George Floyd, of George Floyd. So there's a new amplified voice behind all of this. And if you are turning off your ears still, that, if you are still turning off your ears to their need, that there needs not to be any changes, or that someone's experience is indicative of anyone else's experience or any other group's experience, to me, you're just, you're just being intentionally mean. You're intentionally not trying to hear people. And people are yelling and screaming and saying there needs to be change. And you're like, no, I'm good. They're fine. Let's just leave it. The audacity, the audacity to me. I would never, never, to look at a group of people, people with experiences that are different than yours, and because they're different, discount them? Come on. We're a better community than that. I was just having a conversation while we were on break, and we were talking about the importance of this community and why it's so great, and why I value it so much, and why, when I left for college, I wanted to come back here and raise my family here in this community because of how diverse it was. And I recognize that when I was off in college and I had, and I came from this community that was demographically all over the place, from high income to low income, to black, white, Hispanic, Asian, whatever it was, that I was in a better position in life because of my experiences here. And so I really do truly value the diversity of it all. And I chose to come back and raise my family here and give them that opportunity to have that same diversity, because we become better people when we are. But some people will champion diversity and say it's important and it's beautiful. And then on any topic that's related, that would actually uplift that and amplify the voices of those who are marginalized, it's beautiful until it impedes on what you think is right and wrong in life. And that is terrible to be. So I'm saying all that to ultimately say, I'm going to be fair. This task force has not been perfect. It hasn't, there had not been many great, great moments. I'm going to be honest with you. I've seen nearly every meeting, I haven't seen every subcommittee meeting. It's a lot of meetings, okay? But general meetings, a lot of subcommittee meetings, I've seen the way that they've facilitated. I have not been happy with Kerns and West. But because Kerns and West has not been great, that cannot be a reason of to not, to why we would not or should not continue with the task force and making sure that we get through the issues that need to be gotten through. That can't be, that can't hold it that much weight. It just, it just can't. You can say it's a reason, but it's because you didn't support it anyways. Some of the people, and they may hear me, they may not, I don't know, but you either were going to support this to begin with, or you were going to find a reason to not support it because you didn't want it anyways. That's, let's just be real about that. That's really what's happening. So let's just be honest, and it's okay. I have great conversations with Councilman Shaw about issues that we don't discuss here on the dais, and we have very different viewpoints on things. And that's okay. To make us terrible, doesn't make me terrible, doesn't make him terrible, or Steve terrible, or Rose terrible, doesn't make any of us terrible. But as the mayor said last time, this is how the sausage is made. We have these conversations, and we want to hear our community members. So you put them, you get them in rooms and you have these conversations that you otherwise can't have. Now, supporting the task force isn't the same thing as supporting the initiatives that come down the line. Some of you want to shut down the recommendations, like the conversations that are going to come down the line, not the actual items that are going to be placed on the agenda at some point in time. But you don't even want to have the discussions. We're better than that. So I'm going to be supporting this. I appreciate those who are going to support it tonight. I even appreciate those who respectfully don't want to see it go forward. I'm okay with that. You speak your piece, we all have. And, you know, if this passes tonight, I suspect that it will. But when we go forward, all what I'm just looking for from Kerns and West, now that everything is back in person, that they demonstrate the same level of professionalism and proficiency that they've demonstrated the last two task, general task force meetings, and which was a great improvement from any other time. So that's what I'm looking for, looking for it from them. And then when it comes to the task members, we're reducing the number of task members. For those who are going to still be with us, I expect, like we all do, that you sign up for something, you show up, period. You put your name on something, you stand by it, period. And so I expect for you all to continue to show up, and we're going to continue to support you to get this work done. So, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to take up all the time. It kind of just came to me. But that's all I have to say. So I'm going to be supporting it. Appreciate my colleagues, and I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Shaw.
Just need to respond to a couple of things. You know, it's, we do have, I do have a different perspective on how to proceed. But I don't think that's because I lack understanding, or I don't want to show grace to somebody else, my fellow man, or that I'm not a, that I don't want to be a good listener. What I'm trying to communicate is, I don't think the way that we're going about trying to listen to each other is the best way to do it. And it's, what's interesting is if we draw a timeline from when we started talking about this, if I go back in my sheet, I think it was June of 2020 when we first started talking about this. I think there's been other avenues, initiatives that you've led, initiatives that our own police department has led, community groups that have been, that have been created through, you know, then initiated by them, where some of the things that you're trying to achieve and some of that listening and interaction has happened. And I think we've had more fruit from some of those other avenues than maybe this avenue. So what I'm saying is, I'm concerned that maybe this avenue's not the right avenue to get to that level of understanding that you're seeking. Doesn't mean that I'm not an understanding person. At least, at least that's my own perspective. I understand that each can have our own opinions of each other. I agree that our police department's not perfect, and that's why they continue to change. And I think everyone, I think if anyone looks at themselves in the mirror and says, well, I'm a perfect person, that's a, that's a hard day to go through life when you think that. So I don't think that any of us think that our police department's perfect. It's just the process that maybe we're going through and the things that have been focused on as a task force, that maybe I'm concerned that maybe those aren't the right conversations that are really going to drive to that level of understanding that you speak of. And that's, I guess, my concern, Corey. It's not, it's not, I mean, I love nothing more than to have a conversation with someone, to understand their background, how they came to where they are in life, and what makes them tick, that level of understanding, that curiosity. I mean, that's probably why I love Curious George so much. I mean, I'm like that curious monkey. I love the idea of understanding and hearing someone's perspective. I mean, I, I love that about people because that's what makes people so interesting. That's also what makes life hard, people, because we're all different. I'm not shying away from those differences, or wanting to be curious about understanding each other. What I'm saying is, I just am not sure that this is the right path that's going to help us get that deeper level of understanding. I could be wrong. I'm still committed to understanding that this passes. I'm still committed to being that, maybe that alter perception or alter thought process as we move, as we move forward. But I don't think, I don't think the people that are voting no against this issue tonight are maybe being portrayed like how you're thinking. I don't know. I think there's, I think there's something different. Some of the comments on the, I will say this, some of the comments on the attendance piece, like, there's a few people maybe on the task force that maybe should just step down, that just, because they just, they really can't commit to it. But there's, I would say the vast majority of the people, even when they miss maybe the number that they have, I don't fault them for that. I mean, life is life, and, I mean, that's, it's hard. And so I feel like they've been able to, you know, participate, and maybe they miss, and they come back and they participate again. I mean, I think, I think that just comes down to the heart of a person, right? If you have to miss and you come back with a heart of humility and just kind of jump it in versus trying to tear apart if you miss something, that's a different, that's a different story. I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the majority theme of the task force. And so the attendance piece doesn't bother me as much, because that's just life. No, that's just, that's just some of what's in my heart, I guess. I see it a little differently that, and that goes back to, I guess, why, you know, we talked about, we, there's, there are some different shades as far as how the police department has been involved in this. I mean, there were, there were times where, you know, I remember the chief having presentations ready to share and to share how things worked and functioned so that the task force could get a baseline understanding of something. And she shows up with material and she's told, no, we don't want to hear from you. We want to talk and we want to tell you how it is. So there's been some of that. So to be fair, there's been some pushback against that. You know, it's been hard to get some of the roundtable sessions formed up and people to attend those, to have some of those conversations with the broader department, because the broader department's been, you know, there's a good group of folks on the department that have been wanting to participate in those kind of conversations. And, you know, it's been very fruitful, I think, when they've happened. But it's not been, I don't think the majority of, we might be right in the halfway point as far as majority of task force members taking our department up on some of those roundtable conversations. And so, you know, when there's some comments made that, you know, hey, I think there should be more, you know, department interaction, there's some reasoning behind those comments. That's not a, that's not just a whim that's being said. There's some facts behind why there's that comment. So I'm just trying to, try to, I want to provide the full picture to our community on why people might look at this task force from different perspectives. I get it. I'm white. I think everyone on the, I think everyone here knows that I'm white.
What?
That's just who I am. I can't change that. You can't change who you are. And no one's asking you to change who you are. And I'm hoping no one's asking me to change who I am. I agree. I want our department to treat everyone with the same level of respect across our community. And that's what we're driving towards. But it comes back to some of the same challenges that, you know, we even see up here. It's the people. People, messy with people, trying to fix every person to do this thing the same way and to treat everyone that same way. That's where it gets messy. And so that's where my concern sometimes is when we come in and we think, well, we're going to do this and we're going to fix this individual person or this person thing with a policy or an ordinance or a, or some sort of heavy-handedness. I worry sometimes because I feel like, is that, is that really going to fix the person issue, right? Because that's why I think, I think that's where in life, the issues always reside, is it's individual people issues. And so that, I'm trying to, I'm a little bit more open book here. I think we maybe shifted towards a, I think I've shifted off my logical argument to more just a sharing here with folks tonight on where my heart's at on this. Because I was passionate about this in the beginning, and I, and I feel like that passion is still there in the back of my mind and my heart about why I wanted to do this. What I'm saying is that through this, I just haven't seen that same level of conversation that I was hoping that maybe we would get to. And so maybe, that maybe helps explain why I'm voting the way I am.
Mayor, just to give some clarity.
Ms. Martinez, Abraham. And we have to kind of move, everybody's had a chance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I just wanted to give.
Ms. Martinez has her hand up.
Go ahead. I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to let you know and anyone else up here, when I was talking about the lack of understanding, I'm not saying that you all are bad people. Let me, I'm talking about this subject. I'm not saying that any of you are terrible people. I think all of you are wonderful people. We may not agree on everything, nor do we need to, nor should we. But, so I just wanted to be clear, and you pointing that out, that you felt like I was saying that, and you all aren't bad people.
Thank you.
We just did disagree philosophically on some of that, that's all.
Okay. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you for that clarity, Councilman. I want to speak because, you know, I'm sure you all notice I'm a minority. I am a female. And beginning of my life, there was probably a language barrier. Yes, I was born and raised here, but my first language is Spanish. And Elgin Police Department, back then, I mentioned it briefly, was a different Elgin Police Department than it is now, okay? And I think like in the 90s, if anybody knows anything about the 90s, we can all agree that we probably needed quite a few task forces for the police department, okay? What I'm talking about is, I have said it before, I wish that this task force would have gone from Chief Lally's term on, because we can't change anything that happened in the past. I didn't have great experiences with the police department before. But you know what? I moved on from that. I moved on from that. And I'm not judging anybody from what happened then to what's happening now, okay? I would say that we did have protest demonstrations here in Elgin, and I've said it before, we've had them here in Elgin because it's a safe place to have them. Look at Aurora. It wasn't safe to have any type of protest or demonstration. Look at Aurora, it wasn't safe to have any type of protest or demonstration there, but in Elgin, it was. And why? Because of the Elgin Police Department, because of Public Works, because of the city that Elgin is. We had probably, I'd say, close to like 400 people. That was impressive during a pandemic. It was really impressive. And, and I would've joined it too, but because of pandemic, I didn't. And, and what I'm saying is, that's the kinda community it is here. But of those 400, I beg to differ that there were all Elginites. I know a lot of people that were out of Elgin. I wish that we would always keep it locally, because I'm telling you, what happened elsewhere, it's, I said it before, it's something that we have to be conscientious of, but we have to go ahead and, and just keep it locally of what's happening. None of us have ever said that the Elgin Police Department is perfect. Nobody has said that. As a matter of fact, in one of the meetings, there was a task force member that said it three times, Elgin Police Department is 99% good, it's just that 1%. He said it, okay? And he's, he's somebody who's had problems with the Elgin Police Department. And I kinda agreed with that because I looked, and I said, "You know, Elgin is, as a community, we have an organization where our organization isn't perfect, but there's so many other departments that we could be looking into that aren't 99% perfect." And those departments affect us every single day, all of us here in Elgin, okay? Because it's either a streetlight, it's a pothole, it's an issue with a permit, I mean, everyday life, where a lot of us can go many years without even addressing the Elgin Police Department, okay? The reason why I wanted it to be from Chief Lally on, because ever since this incident, this tragic, terrible incident that we had in Elgin, it's been said, once in 20 years it happened here in Elgin. It was awful, and people thought there had to be a change. And, and maybe so, but not such a drastic change. But I think that even though, it's my personal opinion, Chief Lally has changed the department, and that's what we have to give credit to. What other police department do you know this size that has 36 female? There isn't any, okay? There's more minorities than I've ever seen, okay? And it's, it's happened lately. It's not something that's been for many years, because I didn't see a lot of people in the police department look like me or spoke like me. And I feel that there's more minorities in the police department, okay? That reflects our community. These changes that I'm talking about are changes that have been done in the last five years, maybe, three years, okay? I mean, that's a big change. I know that de-escalation is something that we never talked about 10 years ago, but we're talking about now. When we talk about task forces, like, let's say, what was it? Was that the budget force you were in? How much did it cost the city? Did they pay a facilitator for that budget force? Right. And I'm not sure what task force meeting, or what task force you belong to, for five years?
Commission.
Commission? Okay, commission. You know, our commissions, nobody gets paid for serving on a commission. That's, that's volunteer work. The community who cares? We have a lot of commissions, and a lot of people give their time, and that's commendable. And, and the only reason why I looked at this attendance, you know, out of 18 people, 11 have perfect attendance. That's great. All I'm saying is there are some people that do not have good attendance, and it wasn't until it was brought up to Kerns and West that it became an issue. Not because they came and they said, "Hey, we need to have this attendance." It's like in the middle of the ballgame, somebody had to bring it up to them. "Hey, you know, some people aren't showing up." And that's when that started. I just feel, like I said, I had bad experiences, I've moved on from it. I'm not saying we're great, but we're not bad to the point where other places, other places look around us. You know, if you really wanna look nationally, look around us. Not even too far from here, in other police forces, where they have police-involved shootings, four or five a year, you know? I've said it before, Chief Saboda, where he went to, they had eight police-involved shootings the year before, and that year that he went, they had seven. We don't have that here in Elgin. And, and what I'm saying is, there's a way to do this, but I don't think, I don't think the way we're doing it with Kerns and West, I don't think it's, it's the right way. I think we should talk about it more, but to give money to a task force that has already invested so much time, and yes, they're getting better, you know, but it had to take like half of that time, it had to take all this bunch of money for that time, and now we're gonna give them more, you know? I don't know. I think the greatest conversations, and it's too bad that they weren't televised or nobody saw, was the interaction when you speak to, to the people that you are trying to police, which was with a policeman, you know? I'm sure that any police officer that started 10, 20, 30 years ago is a different person than they are now. I think that we're all changing. I don't dismiss anybody's experience in any way, in any discrimination, in any racist, anything. I suffered from that, I seen it, you know? But I know in our community, we're a large community of Latinos, you know, people think I don't attend things or I don't call things. I'm always incognito because I fit right in. That's the beauty of it. And I go and I ask, you know, "Do you think this is a big issue or not? What's your biggest issue?" I always find people talking more about other issues, like, one time it was water, you know, another time it's, it's infrastructure. But it's, you know, once, once in a while, if I ask them, "What was your, your worst case with the, with the police?" And sometimes there isn't. But if I ask them, "What's your worst case with the city of Elgin?", oh yeah, then, you know, people will be more than glad to tell me, you know? That's what we should be working on. So I, I'm just saying, explaining from my side. I also like to say that we have a police department, I think, that is open, that is open and is willing to listen. We had a lot of great discussions with the community after this incident happened, and they were well-attended. And I think that did a lot to our healing. So, sorry, that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna wrap this up for everybody. And I'm the last person. I'm gonna continue to support this. I've heard nothing to make me change my mind that I didn't hear two weeks ago. I made my decision. The information's been the same, there's been no new information for me to change my mind. I had conversations last night with Councilmember Powell and Councilmember Shaw, and the operative word in this whole thing is a task. This is a task for this community. And Mr. Shaw and Ms. Powell have their task, and that's to finish this job as the council liaisons for the next couple of months and spearhead this through. Kerns and West has their task, and they promised that they would have guidance now that they have, after an epiphany of four months, that they decided that now they have the guidance to get this thing done. And that's what I expect them to do, the task force, a little disappointed in some of the attendance, I didn't chance to look at, at all of them, but I think that needs to be clarified as well, and some people need to maybe be poked a little bit to attend the meetings. But everything's there in place, and the reason I voted for it the first time is because people that I respect had faith that we were turning a corner and moving on, and maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit touched to the, to the virtual part of things and now doing things in more of a face-to-face kind of a discussion. Makes it a little bit easier, and that's kinda the hope that I have. Everybody understands where I stand. We have a time, and I believe it's till the first week of July. I expect a...
July 16th it is, Mayor.
July 16th, I expect the progress report back. And the last couple of months should be fine-tuning. There should be some steps forward here and some recommendations for us to hear by July 16th. And the last two months should be to fine-tune this thing and for staff to work it through. So I'm gonna vote yes on this, and at that point, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Thorne?
No.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 5-3. Consent agenda. Is a move?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0. Miscellaneous business. Move for approval?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0. Miscellaneous business. Move for approval?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0. Announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, June 8th, at 2022, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be June 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. And entertain a motion to adjourn. So move?
Second.
They're moving second to adjourn, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshnberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned.